I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. First time for seven. Roll call, please.
Mr. Clausen.
Here.
Mr. Cox.
Here.
Mr. Phipps.
Here.
Mayor Hall.
Here. Consent agenda. Items listed on the consent agenda are considered to be routine in nature and will be enacted by one motion. No separate discussion of these items will occur unless a council member requests the item to be removed from the consent agenda. If an item is removed from the consent agenda, it will be considered elsewhere on the agenda for this meeting. Prior to asking for a motion to approve the consent agenda, the mayor will ask if anyone desires to remove an item from the consent agenda for public discussion. Would anybody like to remove an item? Hearing none, I move to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of January the 3rd, 2023, the bills and payroll for the first half of January 2023, and resolution number 2023-3229 approving the continuous of a local state of emergency due to the coronavirus COVID-19. Can I have a second on that?
Second.
And roll call.
Mr. Clausen.
Yes.
Mr. Graven.
Yes.
Mr. Phipps.
Yes.
Mayor Hall.
Yes. Presentations, petitions, and communications. This portion of the city council meeting is reserved for persons who desire to address the council. The Illinois Open Meetings Act mandates that the city council may not take action on comments received on matters that had not been identified on this agenda, but the council may direct staff to address the topic or refer the matter for action on the agenda for another meeting. Persons addressing the council are requested to limit their presence and to avoid repetitious comments. We would also ask you to state your name and address for the record as well as stand when speaking. We'd like to have someone speak here? Yes, yep. Just name and where you're from.
My name is Cory Gold. My address is 19.7 East Carrere, 250 North. I am the CEO for Clearwater Service Corporation. I originally came here to discuss easement, and I think we got that figured out. So now I just want to take time to let you know the project that we're using. Again, Clearwater is a rural water company. We service a lot of the area, south of Mattoon and Charleston, all the way down to Toledo, La Marra's area. We also sell wholesale water to Lake Mattoon Public Water District, who's also here tonight. They service the area right around the lake, where you guys have your campground and stuff like that. So we have one distribution line between our system and their system that runs down Lake Road on the east side of the lake. With this easement and the project that we're doing, we're going to take a secondary line around the north end of the lake, back down the west side, give us some redundancy. This project, again, is for redundancy, prevent future outages, and to ensure uninterrupted water service. The Cumberland County is talking about removing the bridges south Camp Nou or their water manhood bridge, so that will be one of those uninterrupted times that we're trying to get away from. A little bit about the project. We'll put in roughly 15,000 feet of watering. We're spanning roughly 16 properties, including one of the city owns. That's about all I got for you guys, but I appreciate your time. Clausen.
Quick question. What's the estimated cost for you guys for this project?
It's a lot. We're sitting a little over $200,000 right now. It's a big one. We'll see how our whores and stuff go. We've got to cross the Little Wall Bash, six roads, and then there is a drainage system that runs into the north end of the lake, and we're going to have to shoot that whole thing. Sure, I haven't gone down here.
So true.
Okay, any other questions in my ass? Thank you very much for coming.
Thank you.
Thanks, Cory.
Okay, now, start with new business.
Making an acknowledgement of.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, we're, Richie couldn't be here tonight, but we want to acknowledge the retirement of Richie Orr, 26 years of service. City Parks Department last Friday was his. Just as you look back over some of these retirements, employees in the Parks Department, it's more than just parks. You know, they go help out at Dodge Grove or at Lake Mattoon. I talked to Kurt a little bit today, and Richie in the past has helped obviously a lot with Lightworks, Bagel Fest, ball field maintenance, tree trimming, a ton of zero-turn mowing, and et cetera, et cetera. And one thing that Kurt said he's going to miss is that Richie was very adept at concrete work and those dugouts that are at Peterson Park and I believe Lawson as well. Richie Orr had a lot to do with putting those in. I think he worked with Derwin Sanders on a couple of projects. So we just want to honor him and thank him for his 26 years. And that has been a part now of six retirements. You hold that thought, Dave.
Do you have any comments about?
Well, I thought he was going to say that when he said Richie was very, I thought he was going to say outspoken, because he, you know, he will tell you what he thinks, which was always, which was always good as well. But no, over my time over in your position now over parks and public property, Richie, you could just count on to show up every day and do the work, and he would give you his thoughts and what he was thinking, which is always good as well. So he was a very good employee for 26 years.
And actually, three generations. His dad worked out there, of course Richie, and then his daughter, Richie's daughter, Ashley, was an officer with the Mattoon PD. So three generations from that family.
Good family.
Yeah, before you go on, just real quick, Dave, did you lose a lot of people?
No, they stayed when I was there, so.
Is that on the agenda, and I miss her? It's just a question.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, so now you've got the floor.
Oh, yeah. Be right with you. Motion to adopt special ordinance number 2023-1848, authorizing the purchase of a permanent easement in the amount of $3,455 and a temporary construction easement located at 3615 Marshall Avenue, piping portion of the Little Wall Bash drainage project, PIN 07-1-00507-001, Doug and Amy Overmeyer.
Could I have a second on that motion?
I'll second it.
Mr. Phipps, and any discussion on that?
I do have a question. On number four, it says the grantee, which assumes us, agrees to replace the existing 11-foot by 6-inch wide by 20-foot long concrete entrance. Do we have an estimated cost on what that, to replace that driveway?
I thought there was something somewhere.
Probably $6,000.
So we're kind of in a hole on this one.
Okay, any other questions? We take a roll call then.
Commissioner Cox.
Yes.
Commissioner Graven.
Yes.
Commissioner Phipps.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Mayor Hall.
Make a motion to approve council decision request 2023-2319, approving the water and sewer billing adjustment in the amount of $1,608.33 and $1,127.19 on behalf of someone, Cuper Inc., located at 1512 Marion Marks Way store. I don't even begin to know how to pronounce that name.
Okay, second on that motion?
Second.
Mr. Cox, and any questions on this one? Hearing none, roll call.
Commissioner Graven.
Yes.
Mr. Phipps.
Yes.
Mr. Clausen.
Yes.
Mr. Cox.
Yes.
Mayor Hall.
Yes.
A motion to approve council decision request 2023-2320, approving the final 2022 MFT street maintenance expenditure statement in the amount of $599,720.34. Public Works Director to sign the municipal maintenance expenditure statement.
And can we have a second on that motion?
I'll second.
Mr. Cox, and questions on this one? Hearing none, roll call.
Commissioner Phipps.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Mr. Cox.
Yes.
Mr. Graven.
Yes.
Mayor Hall.
Yes.
Make a motion to adopt resolution 2023- appropriating $688,600 of motor fuel tax funds for the 2023 street maintenance uses, approving the 2023 MFT street municipal estimate of maintenance costs statement in the amount of $688,600, and authorizing the Public Works Director and City Clerk to sign the documents.
And can we have a second on that motion?
Second.
Commissioner Clausen, and any comments, questions on this item? Hearing none, roll call.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Mr. Cox.
Yes.
Mr. Graven.
Yes.
Mr. Phipps.
Yes.
Mayor Hall.
Yes. Department reports, city administrator in community development, Kyle Gilf.
I handed out, everybody should get a copy of the budget timeline. Department budgets are due next week on the 24th. I failed to send this out to you guys because the first time I sent it out to the department head, it was a draft, but nothing's changed on that. Looking for maybe a first budget presentation workshop around February 23rd to the 28th. That's kind of end of one week, beginning of next. So if, you know, something not decided tonight, but if you guys kind of look at your calendars in the next few days and see what might work for that. Hopefully, things will go well and won't be a bad meeting at all, and we'll see. But again, we've got some departments have gotten their budgets in already, and others are pretty close, and I know everybody's working on theirs. Also coming up, there's a Chamber Annual Dinner, and it's February 25th, it's a Saturday night. Again, in the past, the city has had some of the members wanting to go. It's $50 per person. This week, it seems like have received a lot of complaints on the internet this week through the website. Been answering those pretty quickly and been busy, been working with Alex as he's started new, and I'll let him kind of go in from there on the community development, so.
Complaints on over the internet, you mean on the city website?
Yeah, on the city website, just comments and just anything from flooding to streetlights to neighbors. So I got one today on flooding, and I called her back, and she didn't understand why I didn't know that her basement flooded. So I said, "Did you call anybody?" "No." I'm like, "Well, I didn't even know you had a basement there." Anyway, but we, I talked to her, tried to explain some things to her, but we'll see how that progresses. Public Works go out, take a look at just the area, but I know there's flooding out the streets in that area too, so. But I think she has some grading problems on her own property that need to be addressed. So, yeah, Alex, do you want to talk about community development?
Yeah, of course. So the past almost three weeks now, we've had seven total zoning ordinance requests, so really just like people asking if they're in a TIF area, what their zoning is, specific signage requests, stuff like that. One building permit, three fence permits, three plumbing permits, three street cut permits. Outside of that, Kyle and I met with a group called Dusty's Outdoor Media. They're interested in setting up a digital billboard kind of around where the Wendy's is, or maybe over at Washington Savings Bank. So we're kind of revisiting the ordinance there, just seeing if that's something we can allow in the community or not. From there, went on a tour with Kyle, Dean of Eight Private Developments that are going on in the community, just to kind of learn a little more about them and see how my department can kind of pick up the slack between the transition period there. Working on also some land banking research, potentially a really good way to start tackling the vacant, bent, and deteriorating properties in the community and correcting zoning special use permits and definitions in our ordinances, and, you know, just sit around, listen in, and try to learn, so.
That's all I have. If you guys have any questions for either one of us?
I will comment on those digital signs. You've got to be careful, because I've gone to some smaller towns that have them, and they're so bright, they blind you, drivers. So they are kind of a road hazard.
Yeah, you definitely want to have them, and that's in the write-up.
Yeah.
For that they adjust to outdoor conditions, because if you don't do that, you can see them from miles away, and it's really distracting.
And it can be blinding, it depends on what's on there. It can literally, like headlights coming at you, it can blind you, so.
Any other questions? City Attorney Dan Jones.
Pretty much business as usual at my end. There's a quack and a wex hearing next week. I'll report back at the next meeting on that. Happy to answer.
Okay. Questions here? City Clerk Susan O'Brien.
Basically been training the new hire and just day-to-day issues, dealing with those. That's all I have.
Good. And finance, Beth Wright.
I have the December financial report. So the first eight months of the fiscal year, the general fund had revenue of 19.4 million versus expenditures of, I believe, a surplus of 2.9. And a year ago this time, it was 2.4, so we are quite a bit ahead of where we were a year ago. I would note, in terms of the budget comparison, that third column, you know, property taxes are all in, so that's slightly over budget. But income tax, some of the shared revenues from the state are significantly over the two-thirds mark where they should be. On the expenditure side, the purchase services are 80% versus 67%. Utilities are over, and repairs of buildings and vehicles are over just the eight-month mark. Cash position at the end of December, roughly 24.7 million compared to 25.3 the month prior. And I would say that we paid out the TIF surplus, the 20% that goes to the other taxing bodies, and in the sewer fund, we made a debt payment in December. For revenue tracking, I think last meeting I had only the, so everything else is new. Year over year, we're up by just over $9,000 in terms of our major sources of revenues. And the unrestricted cash in the general fund today is 11.4 million, and two weeks ago, it was 11.4 million. That's all I have to report.
Any questions for Beth? Okay, next is Public Works, Dean Barber.
Solidated Communications owns the videos available for them, the cameras at the DTO. They finally have the last of the cameras in. They started work today installing those. You may recall, all the cameras inside the building are done. These are mostly the exterior cameras, which will focus on Heritage Park and progress toward parking lot, and they're replacing one camera downstairs that points at the bathroom doors, which is a lot where most of our vandalism occurs. So looking forward to the end of that. The police department has been really happy with cameras so far. They're watching from the dispatch center, see what people are doing, and then show up to confront people as opposed to walking in line. Amberin redid the transmission line through town a couple of years ago. They are, the work that they did a couple of years ago started at the substation west of town by Lane 8, and it went to a substation on the bike trail behind the mall essentially. They are, they've just started work from there to Charleston, and so the bike trail will be closed intermittently in the areas where they are working, similar to what happened a couple of years ago. Contractor, this is a different contractor, doesn't, they're not as good, but expect a lot of trouble, but to let people know, immediate work areas will be closed, and then as they move along, those areas will be open. Nothing will be closed over the high. They will be working on Saturdays, Sundays, everything. Whitney and I have been working on the grant for the piping for Little Wall Bash drainage project, the easement that was approved tonight goes in that grant application. We close on this easement tomorrow. We're having a closing. The grant application goes in on Thursday. Feel really good about it right now. I always feel good about our grant applications when they go in. We're requesting $925,000 for that, $1.230 dollar write-off. That's all I have to report. Any questions?
Any update, Dean, on the iDOT and the interchange? Is it still same timeframe or?
Nothing different since last report. They were expecting to bid work through town in March, and the interchange is in. I will follow up on that sometime in February.
Any other questions? Next is Fire Chief.
Thank you, Mayor. Since our last meeting, the guys have answered 72 calls for service. Inspectors, they did three different inspections and follow-ups. One of them was the final inspection at the Clarion, is it the Clarion plant? They've got a few minor things to fix, but they should be open February, beginning of February, so that'll be a nice addition. They said it looks pretty good in there. I am working on my total year-end calls for service last year, my year-end report. I'm having a little difficulty because we've switched software right in the middle of the year, so I'm calculating data from Firehouse Software from January to June, then July to the end of the year, image trend. I hope to get that to you guys within the next week or so. The guys did ARF and ASMAT training. Medic class started last week. I got five guys in it. And another big project that's going on is the end of February, we're getting a new dispatch system, so we've been taking guys to get logged into this new system and do a little bit of training with it. It's supposed to go in, take effect the end of February, so that's all I've got, unless anybody's getting questions from me.
Did you happen to get involved with that house fire over Charleston over the last week?
Yeah, Sunday morning.
Right, so you had people go.
Yep. Yep. Yeah, those guys did a pretty good job. Their ladder truck is out of service, and it's in for repairs, so we take our ladder truck over. We thought that one was going to, we were going to have to use it. The call came in, people trapped above the fire, started in the garage, and it wasn't attached, moved into the house, and 5:30 in the morning, they were still asleep, but everybody got out. No serious injuries.
Everybody but the cats, I understand.
One cat. They saved one, lost one.
Any questions for Jeff? You got any report?
Yeah, Sam couldn't be here. Actually, ended up having a water leak at his house, and he shut the water off, and it didn't completely shut off, so he had to make a quick run to Home Depot and get some parts to fix it. Police Department said, though, they did 1,004 calls in the last two weeks and had 40 arrests, so.
Good. Any questions about police, arts and tourism? Angelia?
Find out the Lightworks file numbers. Pretty simple, I'm not going to read it to you, just, it's interesting to point out, 2019 kind of benchmark for a lot of things, because that's the last time before COVID, normal numbers, and we were heading in a pretty good trajectory at that point, and then 2020 and 2021 were kind of strangely. Lightworks, for example, in 2020 was the only thing happening, and so it was an incredible year. 21 was very good, too, and 22 was still very good. Obviously, much better than 2019, but fell a little bit short of the other two outstanding years. So that's where we're at before we make some decisions about new displays. Very healthy year. I'm sorry I cut it off. I would also tell you that they were just short of 4,000 walkers that came through that first night as well. Sorry that didn't make the report. You might have any questions about them, I know it's pretty simple, but yeah.
Just the electric? We got billed this year, and we haven't the last four, or last three previous?
Gas electric bill?
Yeah.
You know, I.
$9,000 this year, up on our box the last few years.
No, that's not, that's electric service. We did additional electric add-ins, new purchases.
Okay.
Sorry, sorry, I lost track of what you're asking. That is a number that does, that would be the electric bill.
Gotcha.
Everything else is pretty, pretty close to other years. And we're getting ready to make some new purchases, so we currently have 30 people waiting.
Quick question, do we, the park department, don't they come and turn either on or off them? Is that overtime that we're paying them to do that? Is that factored in here, the extra labor cost?
When it's billed to me, we pay it, and it hasn't been billed to me a long time. We billed it towards the, I should say. Yeah.
Any other questions? Okay, then comments by the council. Let's go with Jim Clausen.
Just had preliminary discussion with Kurt and Kyle on Richie's replacement, trying to get a timeframe for that. And then Kyle and I have also trying to get a timeframe in how we're going to fund the resurfacing of the tennis courts out of Peterson for the pickleball players. Still getting a lot of, you know, running into them, "Hey, when you going to have the pickleball courts ready for us?" So our goal is hopefully June 1st to have that up and going for them, so. And that sport just seems to be taken off, just more and more people playing it, so. So I think we got a pretty good plan on both those projects. That's all I have, Mayor.
All right, then we'll have Dave Cox.
Nothing, this evening. Thank you, Mayor.
Nothing, okay. And Sandy, Raven?
I have nothing.
And let's see, who else? I guess it's up to me then.
No, no.
We get to go to David. Oh, I always forget. The best for last.
Easy, easy, forget. Just best wishes, best wishes to Richie, and then that's all I have.
Okay. Now it's my turn. I received a call this last week from an organization called the National Forum. Their full title is the National Forum for, Forum for Health, Disease, and Stroke Prevention. It's a organization, a not-for-profit organization that's funded through the federal government. They promote strong communities and healthy living. They've got a program going right now, which they call Move With the Mayor, and they have, they have asked me to do a public service announcement through this organization. I haven't got that done. We don't have any costs on that. There's, right now, there's about 50 mayors across the United States that's been involved with this, but they hope to have 1,000 mayors. And they feel, they've got this feeling, at least that's what they say to me, is that they feel like that mayors have a close connection with the communities, and they can promote things that particularly relates to healthy living and strong communities. And so I'm going to do at least one 15 to 30-second, 15 seconds to 30-second public announcement, and see how that works out. If it works out, we'll maybe go further than that. Do they have?
I thought you were going to say was.
Well, they have.
15 to 30 seconds. Don't go too long.
Yeah, well, we're going to start slow. You know, some people are older than others.
I'm still trying to figure out how he's going to get what he has to say in 15 seconds.
Well, it's only going to be a few words.
Can you expound upon the Move With the Mayor? Are you going to be a dancer on this, or?
Can you expound upon the Move With the Mayor? Are you gonna be a dancer on this or?
I think it's either walk, walk with the mayor, or bike with the mayor, or run with the mayor. I may have David Phippsar, runner on the team, you know, represent the mayor, and you could have people run with the commissioner. You know, you could do those kind of things. But the whole point behind the thing is living, so we'll see how that works out.
You'll do good.
Yeah, other than that, let's see, I think that's about it. Anybody have any questions for me? Yeah, they have their own setup. They, I asked that, and they, they don't have any other organizations involvement. That way, everybody's on the same platform, does it the same way. But we have, again, no cost. We'll have the control over where it's promoted. I could give you examples of other, what other mayors have done, but yeah, so anyway, but yeah, appreciate that. Any other questions? All right, so the next thing we gotta do is we've got to, I've got to move to approve. No, no. Yeah, we're gonna go to closed session here. See, okay, I move to recess to closed session pursuant to Illinois Open Meetings Act for the purpose of litigation, which is affecting the city, and action is probable or imminent. Five I L C S one twenty-two C eleven, and the review of minutes of meetings lawfully closed for purposes of the semi-annual review as mandated by section two point zero six, five I L C S one twenty-two C twenty-one. And could I have a second to that motion?
Second.
Mr. Cox, and you can turn to that meeting.
Commissioner Cox?
Yes.
Commissioner Graven?
Yes.
Recess to closed session, so I will pause the recording at this time.
Are you fine, Mike? Still recording?
Yep, we're ready.
Okay, reconvene? Okay, I move to approve council decision request twenty-two-three dash twenty-three twenty-one, authorizing release of minutes appropriate for disclosure from meetings in closed session to the city council, and destruction of disclosed executive session minute audio through June twenty twenty-one. Need a second on that one?
I'll second that, Mayor.
Mr. Phipps, and we will have any discussion.
Commissioner Graven?
Yes.
Commissioner Phipps?
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen?
Yes.
Commissioner Cox?
Yes.
Mayor Hall?
One thing I will add is the arbitration, the briefs, closing of arbitration. Briefs were due January fifteenth. I don't know what attorney or the arbitrator or what, but there was sickness, more COVID and flu. So anyway, the arbitrator is out until January thirtieth, so now they're due January thirtieth. So, and then we think about thirty days. He's usually quick, one that usually responds pretty quick, so I would say that in thirty days, we should have an answer on that one.
That's all I have. Okay, so we're ready. Need a motion to adjourn?
Mayor, make a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Cox?
Second.
And roll call.
Commissioner Phipps?
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen?
Yes.
Commissioner Cox?
Yes.
Commissioner Graven?
No.
Mayor Hall?
Yes.
That concludes me.